Mrs. Slunt, roll call, please.
Dr. Cortalino, here. Mr. Daughtry.
Here.
Mrs. Fano, here. Dr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Rappelport.
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman. Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Grau.
Here.
Mr. Arena.
Here.
Mr. Rizesti.
Here.
Okay. Play the allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the small liberty and justice of our all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montpel Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montpel Township Municipal Building, all Montpel Public Schools, the Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on February 5th, 2022.
Thank you. Who would like to go first? Speak into the mic loud.
So to give us some past news, on April 6th, the World Language National Honor Society induction ceremony was held. Congratulations to the select seniors who are inducted into the respective World Language Honor Societies, and thank you to all the volunteers at the event. Last week brought also the end of the third parking period on April 11th, as well as spring break with the observance of Good Friday and Easter. In current news, senior portraits for the class of 2023 began yesterday on April 25th and continued through this week. And also this weekend, only this week, tickets are being sold for senior breakfasts, which will be held at the mansion in Mountain Lakes on May 27th. Then looking to the future, the following opens up prompt ticket sales for all seniors starting May 4th and running through May 13th. But that, the next week also brings much more, though. On Monday, May 2nd, AP testing will begin in the media center, so good luck to those who are testing. And May 1st is National College Decision Day, the deadline for seniors to pick their college. For many seniors that are facing the single biggest decision relies, so I'd like to give my congratulations to the seniors for their hard work of last four years. And then last on my list, the school of Rock is hosting a night show on Wednesday, May 11th at 7:00 PM in the courtyard with a brain date for Thursday, May 12th.
Thank you, Philip. Any questions of Philip? Dan?
So for the sports update, the baseball team is having an unreal season so far as they now host a record of eight and two overall. They will take on Randolph tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM and look to complete the season sweep. Arguably, the most impressive run by any Montpel sports team this year has come from our softball team, who is now 11-0 on the season. They pitched at another shutout to Kinnalon yesterday afternoon and continue their run tomorrow versus Medham.
Yeah, not in a way.
Uh, that is away. The boys lacrosse team is off to a roller coaster start to their season. After starting the season 2-5, they have won two of their last three games, one of which included an 18-2 beatdown of Verona, and they will look to continue their spark tomorrow versus Roxbury. The girls lacrosse team is also on a bit of a roller coaster season with some great wins and some tough losses. They will face perhaps their toughest test of the season on Thursday afternoon when they hike to Sparta. The track and field team has had great success this year, led by seniors Jane Golovoshky and Robert George. Young talent was also on display last week with some top-three finishes from our freshman sophomore Discus, triple jump, 4x200, and sprint medley relay. Montpel golf has gotten off to a great start to their season as they announce board a record of 7-3 overall. They are a few wins away from qualifying for the state tournament for the second year in a row, and they'll also be sending individual qualifiers of sophomore Eli Kaufman and myself, and they face Chad on tomorrow at home. And finally, after a 1-3 start to the year, the boys tennis team has won five of their last six matches, some of which included downwind 4-1 splits against Mopier, Northern Highlands, and Moorestown, and their next match will be home against DeWarton tomorrow.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions?
Just one briefly, this really is for the administration. World Language Honor Society, would it be appropriate to list students' names and upcoming good news on the agenda?
Uh, it's a very lengthy list. There were numerous students inducted in the four languages.
Maybe we can go back on the old business or new business. Any questions for Dan or Philip?
Okay.
At this point. Good luck, Dan and Mark. Okay, Philip?
Thank you.
I'll see you guys, I guess, next week hopefully. Thank you. We have a couple presentations here. Dr. Rovtter, your remarks?
Yes. We do have several presentations tonight. I'm excited about all of them. Uh, the first one, Mr. Queen, who advises our robotics team, had approached me a couple months ago about wanting to have a presentation for the board. I was very enthusiastic about that, but our location at the administration of the township building did not really lend itself to that, so we waited until we were back here at the high school for one of our meetings. So our students have set up a demonstration for you. I would ask if folks want to move to the back of the media center. You'll have a much better spot to view, and Tim is going to walk us through the demonstration.
Well, I'm Jim Queen, and Dr. Rovtter, Mr. Rao, and members of the board. Thank you for having us and just demonstrating the hard work and effort that these gentlemen and others have put in this year. We're a member of the VEX robotics organization, and each year they put out a game, a competition, which has various playing pieces that go onto the field. And the robots basically have two modes of operation. One's just completely autonomous, in which the students program, and, you know, for the robots to move on their own and score by either placing these donuts onto these pieces here or moving them. These are mobile goals, like pieces, and they can move them into their zone here behind the white tape, or they can even put them up onto this teeter totter here, kind of thing. So, you know, there's this autonomous mode, usually runs 20 to 30 seconds, and then after that, there's driver control, and they continue to try and score these game pieces and get up onto the teeter totter, and they usually get a minute and a half to two minutes, you know, to do that. This year, because of COVID, it was an odd year. No one wanted to host a competition at first. The minute a competition opened up, we finally registered for one. Of course, that was the weekend where we had the ice storm and school was closed on Friday, so it wasn't an ideal year. But that's okay, we extended our season a little bit. It gave the teams an opportunity to build, like, a second robot that complemented the first robot they built because there's different modes of scoring. Before I turn it over to Jared and Josh here and Jack, I just want to say thank you to the district for funding the science programs here, including robotics, but just the science department as a whole. I've worked at a couple of other districts. I can tell you that we do have a generous budget here for science. We can give the kids a quality experience that they need. We can update the software and devices that we use, like in physics and chemistry. The equipment that we need are the chemicals or the specimens in anatomy and biology, whatever, right? The monies are there, and, you know, our students get that valuable experience, you know, and it's appreciated. It's also, I'd like to say, the past several years, you know, having worked under Dr. Rovtter here, I am thankful for getting a referendum passed, right? It took a lot. It's not very popular, you know, to get one passed, but it means a lot to maintain our infrastructure and make sure we're taking care of, you know, everything for the years to come. That means a long-term thing, for the next 20, 30 years, that's going to pay dividends for us. But it really meant a lot, and it just reminds me how special the district is, the support we get, and not just financial support, but the parents, too. The board, you guys, just all the way around. It's a great district, you know, and working in these past seven, eight years. Just wanted to share that with you. So our two team captains this year, and that's a nice thing, we're fortunate enough to have a budget where we can support two or three teams if need be, depending on the turnout that we get. Jared here is a senior, he's going to be heading to Purdue University in Engineering next year, but he's a team captain for Team 30A. And then this is Josh Su over here, he's a sophomore, I'm sorry, junior. Both of these guys walked into the building as freshmen. They walked into the robotics, like, the first meeting we had. They were in there, valuable assets from day one, contributing, offering whatever skills they had. And now they find themselves leaders in passing on that information. And Jack, this is his first year with us, but, you know, he's, especially he's in programming, and he's proved a valuable resource as far as the programming aspect up here. So what I'm going to do first is just turn this over to Jared over here if you want to explain a couple of robots you guys built.
Sure. So my team focused on building these two robots. This up here was our first robot, and it's hard to tell because it's in its compact form because at the beginning of a round during a competition, it has to be within an 18-by-18-by-18-inch box, but it expands out and it has this large lift on the front where these arms go down and they lock in place, and they won't come back up, hopefully, for the remainder of the round. And then this lift will actually be able to come up, and its purpose is to place these mobile goals on top of this seesaw. And we're awarded a very large number of points for being able to position them on top of the seesaw and level that seesaw with even goals on either side. And so we spent a large amount of time on this, and it was good because my team is largely composed of freshmen who, especially with COVID, may not have been exposed to some of the same engineering principles that they have in past years. So we really use this as an opportunity to build up those skills and teach, you know, share our skills as seniors to the new incoming freshmen. So hopefully, in future years, the program will prosper. And once we completed this robot, we began working on this other robot. And this one's interesting because whereas this one was focusing on manipulating these mobile goals, this robot gave us an opportunity to play with these ring elements, and it uses this lift, we call it intake, that operates like conveyor belt, and it picks up these rings and pulls them in. And using these arms that will come down, it'll pick up a goal, and it will hopefully deposit the rings onto the, uh, the fire coming out of the goals, and that will reward us points, and it'll move them around, and hopefully we'll score a large number of points and be able to demonstrate that with our autonomous.
Josh. Okay, so my name is Joshua Su, and it is my honor to be here before all of you. So, as you can see here, our team also constructed two robots. This is the first robot that we constructed. Currently, the design I based, I based on, when I was watching videos and doing research on the competition, I noticed that the competitive teams and the winning teams mostly won by collecting the goals and then stacking them upon the teeter totter because goals on the teeter totter are worth 40 points each, which is a lot of points compared to, like, the ring elements, which are, which can be as little as one point, assuming you get them on the bottom of one of the smaller goals. Uh, with our robot here, I chose to use a double-layered design here, with the bottom layer having four motors providing power to all four wheels so that there was very high traction, allowing it to carry the heavy weight of the two goals up the ramp. On the second layer, it has a completely unique gear system, which allows it to function these two arms separately, which can go down, scoop up goals, and then lift them back up into here, which this part up here clamps into the goals. So therefore, the goals are secured tight, and it's almost impossible to remove the goals from the robots as the robots will be fighting a lot over the goals. And the design, the design of having a front and a back, which can both pick up goals, is that the robot can pick up two goals at once, a design that was not very often seen in VEX robotics, even for the very competitive teams. Also, this allows the robot to pick up goals even without turning fully around as it can simply drive into reverse and pick them. Uh, as you can see here, this is our second robot. So this robot actually has a much simpler design, which just features a claw that can pick up rings and as well as a solid beam here, so it can basically use this whole area to scoop rings or goals. And then this area is also enough to scoop a goal, and it brings them to our side. This robot mainly serves as a support for our main robot. The purpose of this robot is speed, so that's why we only use the single wheel, we only use power to the rear wheels here because the robot is designed to travel fast throughout the courts and pick up goals and rings while, like, while basically ensuring that the rings and goals cannot be picked up by other robots. Back here, we noticed that the robot was tipping over, so we decided a wheelie bar in order to prevent the robot from traveling, from flipping over when traveling because it was going really fast. And also, as Jared already mentioned, most of the people on our robotics team this year were actually freshmen or people that had very little experience. When I was constructing these two robots, I actually did not have anyone on my team who had any prior experience in robotics, so I was the only member in the team who had experience. I found it to be a fun and interesting challenge teaching the members of my team about how to use different tools and walking them through the steps of robotics because I was able to teach them the different functions of the robot as well as why each function is important to the robot. Thank you.
You guys ready to go?
Yep.
All right, so this autonomous mode done by our programmers here. At least this one over here is...
I worked on that one with some of the other programmers on the team. We had three programmers on the team, including me.
And the robots have sensors on there. They can tell how many times the wheel turns. They have gyroscopes, so they can, they know their actual position. You know, they can direct them at certain angles.
Tell me when you want me to run it.
Just as soon as Jared's ready.
All right, on a count, I'm ready to run.
All right, three, two, one, go.
All right, so that's the autonomous portion. Now they'll just demonstrate real quickly the remote control portion here.
Uh, so it would, the remote control portion of the robot uses a separate code, but in a real tournament, it would be all under one file because, like, after they run autonomous, then the drivers would just take control.
Unfortunately, this robot during the autonomous didn't get a very good grip on that goal, and so it wasn't able to reel it in enough to pause the motion.
Yeah. If it had reels it in, then it would have been able to put the ring that was on it in, on the pole.
So for, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I'm sure you can go ahead, or sorry, rather, you can go first.
Okay, so, so, basically, for the manual control, I chose to use, like, I should...
Well, it's just working.
It's, it's, it's the one that says manual control, right?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so for... Probably, yeah. So for, for our robot with the manual control, I chose to use, like, the two arms to function separately in order to, like, drive around and pick up goals. That's good. And then this, this here, and then this is the second, and this is our second goal, so therefore, they will carry the two goals around.
Watch how we're getting up on the teeter totter. I'll move the tattletale.
Yeah, watch her try to push it up. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead and take it up your ramp.
Since, since notice the teeter totter is, like, is higher up, so how we would get up the ramp, we would lower the arms slightly, like this, and pull the arms down again. And the robot's balanced, and therefore, we would get a lot of points because the yellow goals are worth a lot of points because they're neutral goals that both teams would be fighting over.
And along that, just getting it balanced on the ramp is another good amount of points.
Yeah, just balancing the robot alone on the ramp is worth an entire 30 points, whereas balancing one with goals is worth 40 points. And that's a lot, that, and overall, that's, that's over. That's almost, yeah, that's 100 points. And then that's basically, that was basically, like, an automatic win right there.
We believe it, we believe it.
Sure, and this robot, well, I don't have a lot of driving experience because I focused on building it. Uh, hopefully, I can try to put a ring on this pole. Pick it up.
Take a look down here.
Moving back to this post.
There you go. Well, we're in there, though.
Do you want to try balancing the two robots on the ramp?
I think we're...
You think that's...
That's a good question.
I think that's all we have to show.
Pretty impressive.
Well, in the actual competition, there's more than the field. There's usually two robots under red lines that we're actually fighting against.
Yes. Did the robot have names?
No, no.
We should name them.
We could name them.
You want to name them?
Yeah. I know!
It's a name for ours because we did have to label their codes. So this one, because of naturally manipulating the goals, we call it Goal Bot, and this one Ring Bot because it manipulates the rings, but I'm sure it's more creative.
No Mustang names?
And then, uh, we didn't have much better names for ours. We just called this one the Lift Bot, and this one the Claw Bot because that's the claw and this one has the lift.
What is the size of this standard court? Is that a standard child court?
This is, we're just sure, it's basically 12 by 12. So I just left off the four feet over here that the other team would be working on.
How many students of world do we have in the robotics program?
What's that?
How many students overall are in the robotics?
You know, it varies. At the beginning of the year, it's like 35 or so, and then once we get towards the middle of the year, it's around 20, and then, you know, it just slowly tapers off, and we compete with sports, mostly. Swimming comes up and we lose a few dudes, and then track comes up and we lose Jack. He'll come in for 10 minutes, "Gotta go to track, guys," and, you know, off he goes, things like that. So, you know, it does fluctuate a little bit, but...
How many girls do you have in it?
Um, right now, I don't think we had any that stuck with it. We had a few at the beginning of the year, and we didn't have any that stuck with it. So we're trying. We get them in there, we just need to see the whole court win. Is there, excuse me, a league, like, a group of schools that makes a league of teams? Well, the VEX robotics is an organization that hosts a league. So there's a, there's a New Jersey State VEX robotics, right? So there's, you know, there's, I can't remember, 50, 60 different teams, school teams that do VEX. And we'll go to Milburn, we'll go up to Sussex, we'll go, you know. We were hoping to go down to New Brunswick, you know, so various schools host these competitions, and there's easily anywhere from 40 to 65 teams. Have we ever hosted one? Have we? Years ago, I think before my time, we did used to host these competitions. It'd be nice to get back into that. It definitely raises, it just seems to raise the bar for the students, not just to host it, but just everything, all the way around, it just seems to raise the bar.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you again. A really wonderful presentation, and I am so proud of you.
Yeah, your whole mission's running here.
The talents that I would ever have without it are just so wonderful. Moving on, I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. Woodring. She is going to do a presentation on curriculum.
Good evening, everyone. So if you have been reading the news or watching TV, you might have heard some things about the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and especially the comprehensive health and physical education standards that were adopted in the year 2020. So I just want to clarify some things, explain our process here in Montpel Township Public Schools and some of the requirements that we must abide by as public local education agencies. So in 2020, as I said, the state adopted, the state Board of Education adopted new standards for many of our different content areas. Actually, basically, all of them except ELA and mathematics. And this is a lot of text, but basically, all you need to know from this is that it's the New Jersey Administrative Code 6A, and in that code, it talks about the authority for educational goals and standards. And if you read this, you'll basically see how there is a very specific process that needs to be followed when the state board adopts new or revised student learning standards. There is a public meeting where the commissioner presents to the state board any recommended revisions. If, I'll back up just a little bit. When they are scheduled to update the standards, which is usually about every five years, the State Department of Education will put out broadcasts to the educational community asking for people to either be on the committees, go to meetings, to get feedback about what should be in the standards. And then if you are chosen, you can sometimes sit on some of these committees that actually do that work. But once it is in its draft form, the state board will, you know, provide notice to the public. There is a comment and a public hearing on the recommendations. And then, once the state board adopts it, the commissioner will publish and distribute to the district boards of education and the general public all of the revised standards, and they're usually found on their website. Basically, you know, district boards of education are tasked with making sure that their curriculum and their instruction are designed and delivered in such a way that all students are able to demonstrate the knowledge and skills found in these standards. Even though we have standards in every single content area, our New Jersey student, state, wait a minute, what am I? The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment only covers science, ELA, and mathematics. But as part of this, we need to make sure that we are also looking at every single type of student that we have in our district. The department, and this is important, provides district boards of education with standard support materials that suggest a variety of activities and strategies that may assist in the development of the local curricula. It does not... It does not give us a curriculum that is the sole function of the local boards of education and the administration. So what is our process? Here in Montville Township, as per our agreement with the MTEA, teachers are paid a stipend to write or revise curricula. And the curriculum stipends, the names of those individuals who will be doing the writing, is found on the public agendas, and they are approved. Once teachers are approved to write it, they have from July 1st to the following May to write and revise. This is so that the teachers can solicit feedback from their department colleagues, and they're not rushed through it. You know, many years ago, when I was a teacher and I was writing curriculums, they gave me everything, and they told me to go off in the summer by myself and write it, and then, that was it. We wanted a more collaborative approach, and that's why we give our teachers that time during the school year, so that they can speak with their colleagues, they have time to talk with supervisors and other individuals to produce a quality product. Once they have done their work, they submit it to their department supervisor, and the department supervisor is responsible for thoroughly reviewing and requesting any changes, and then they submit it to me, and then, my job is to proofread it, edit it, revise it if it needs to be done, have conversations with the supervisors if it needs, you know, more work than just a simple edits, and also to make sure that we're in compliance with all the laws, the statutes and the mandates, and then to evaluate the resources and the assessment criteria found within the documents. We also make sure that it has the rigor and the research-based instructional practices that we expect in our schools. Once that portion is complete, I present it to the draft curricula to the board's Curriculum, Instruction and Technology Committee, and the CIT committee gets those draft documents before the meeting, they have an opportunity to peruse it, the full board also gets it at that same time, so everyone on the board has those documents, and then, the committee can ask questions, get feedback, make any kind of suggestions, and then, once they're satisfied with it, then those draft documents go on the board agenda for full board approval. Once the full board approves them, then they are placed on the district website under the curriculum and instruction page. There are some districts that don't provide the complete curricula, they'll only do kind of a general overview. We here publish our complete documents, so everyone has access to the full curriculum. So what does this mean for comprehensive health and physical education standards? There's been a lot of misinformation going around, so I just want to put some things out there to make it very clear that there is no approved curriculum or resources that is mandated by the New Jersey Department of Education that the district must use. We create the documents, we create the curriculum. Many of you might have seen it on social media, in even publications on NJ.com, the Star Ledger referenced the Advocates for Youth Curriculum and Lesson Plans. These are not state mandated and do not have to be used in New Jersey classrooms. We make sure that we, we go through and we research and we put in our own resources. Since I've been here now ten years, we have never used a pre-made curriculum or lesson plans for any of our courses. We have some of the best teachers I have ever worked with, and they're the content experts, and so, it is in the best of interest, I think, of our students to have them actually create the documents and create the resources that go along with it. At this time, we have not completed the changeover or the revisions to our health and our PE curriculum. It is still in progress. And because of all of this, and, you know, because of some of the issues and the questions around it, we have purposely, you know, taken our time to do this revision work. So it has not been approved, it has not even made it to the CIT committee yet. It will be ready to go, and we will be in compliance by the beginning of the new school year, when it has to be fully implemented. Just to let you know, I know this is a lot of text too, and it's kind of small, but what you see on this page are the requirements for all comprehensive health and physical education curricula. So in grades K to twelve, mental health, sexual abuse and assault awareness and prevention education, accident and fire prevention, drug, alcohol, tobacco, controlled dangerous substances and anabolic steroids, gang violence prevention, and suicide prevention, which starts in grade five, all must be within all curricula K to twelve. In the grade six through twelve curricula, consent must be discussed, and there is a statute that stresses abstinence. And then, in grade seven through twelve, sexting is discussed with our seventh graders, and then, dating violence and breast self-examination are included in the health standards and the health curriculum. And in grades nine through twelve, the New Jersey Safe Haven Infant Protection Act, CPR AED, instruction and organization are discussed with the high school students. If you see in all of these, next to it, there is a statute that goes along with it. So those are requirements that we must include in our curriculum. There are also requirements that are, that must be in all approved curricula in all content areas, and those are our 21st century themes and skills, those are our financial literacy, our engineering design, our design thinking, computer science, many of those topics are included in there. Amnesty Law, which we've had in our curriculum for a number of years, Holocaust Law, and the Diversity and Inclusion Law is probably the most recent one of those. That, and those topics need to be woven within all of our curricula in all content areas, K to twelve. And then, only, starting at the middle school, do we discuss the contributions of those individuals with disabilities or who identify as being part of the LGBTQ community. Always, for a number of years, parents have rights. If they have a conflict with their conscience when it comes to health, family life education, or sex education with the health curriculum, they can send a letter to the principal and opt their child out of those lessons. And we do have our district policy 5250, which is excusal from class or program, and it specifically states what parents can opt their children out of, and how to do that in lieu of that lesson or those lessons on that topic, they would be provided an alternative program, and it would still be within the health standards, it just wouldn't be those topics necessarily. And if they have an issue with that, they can, you know, we kind of work with the parents to come to an alternative assignment that meets their needs and it is in compliance with other health standards. Does anybody have any questions?
I do, Andrea. Is this, will this be posted on our website?
Yes.
It will probably be posted tomorrow. Thank you. And how do the current standards differ from the prior standards?
The older standards were a little bit more general. I would say that these standards are more specific, especially at the middle school level, and they bring some of those topics that were historically more at the middle school level down to the later, like, fourth, fifth grade level. The K one and two, many of those topics were already always in the standards, just maybe different terminology or updated terminology based on, you know, what terms we use now. But I don't see anything that is so far removed from what we've always been doing.
Thank you.
Can you just briefly mention how you adjust the curriculum for age-appropriate-ness?
So when the teachers get together and they write the curriculum, they're the experts within that age group. So we have teachers who teach primary grades, writing the primary health curriculum, they know their students and they know, you know, what they can say. You know, some of the standards talk about, you know, family, we've always been doing that, and we've always talked about, you know, you know, types of families and having the kids talk about them and be proud of where they come from and, you know, their family structure. That's in our social studies curriculum, it's a health standard, but they talk about it in terms that are very, they're, they're just, I mean, when you talk to our teachers, a lot of them are, you know, rightfully nervous about, like, are they going to misstep? And our suggestion to them is do what you've always been doing, because they've always known how to talk to their students in age-appropriate terms, and, and we're not really going to change that.
Anyone else?
I just have one question, Charlie. Thank you, Andrea. I just have a question. I know that there are some children that are integrated in classrooms that have special needs, so how are the teachers, I guess, how do they prepare to maybe go through those subjects cautiously, so those children understand, or I'm just curious on how teachers might need to help those students?
So they would follow the child's, you know, with students with disabilities, children with, you know, IMPs, they would make sure that they are meeting all their accommodations, modifications, you know, front-loading vocabulary, whatever strategies that they would normally use, they would use in this situation as well. You know, when you get to the, the middle school, I, I think that it's, they speak from a very factual point of view, they provide the students with facts, they don't sensationalize it or make it into something that it's not, and, you know, when, when you take all of that away, it's just another boring lesson that the kids need to sit through.
That's a good answer. Put that in the court. Anybody else?
I just want to say, look to Renee and Andrew, I want to thank you for bringing this out. There's, you know, there's a lot of misinformation going on out there. I think there's a response to that, I think it's important that we get on top of it so the public understands what's true and what's rumor. And I just, anybody, I would encourage that if you have a question about the curriculum to, to reach out to, you know, the administration before you go posting something on social media that, because you read it somewhere, that may or may not be true. It's important that we just not get rumors started that are both divisive and untrue.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else?
Good point, Mike.
Go, Brian. Is it on?
Yep.
Is it on? Yeah. Okay. I, I think Andrea really made a good point, that the experts are by grade level, people who have worked with first graders, or with fourth graders, or with eighth graders, or juniors in high school for years, know the appropriateness of what things they can handle. And I think that was very common, that maybe the teachers are the experts, on what to teach, what they can handle, okay? Unfortunately, we don't have much people here.
To give a presentation, but Andrea, thank you very much. I guess you might be prepared to ask questions at the next several meetings, because I'm sure it might be resurrected, but thank you very much. And now we'll go into the next presentation, Dr. Rotan.
Just one more comment with regard to Andrea's presentation. We do have a resolution on the agenda this evening. When I was at the Morris County Superintendent's Roundtable on Friday, the county superintendent, they communicated to us that based on the governor's directive to the State Department of Education, the student learning standards for comprehensive health and physical education are currently being reviewed. Our resolution is asking that the implementation of the new standards be delayed for a year, simply to allow us to deal with the timeline that Mrs. Woodring set forth. If they are not going to complete their review and make any modifications or issue their final determination until perhaps sometime this summer, it doesn't really allot very much time for us to do the full process. So our request is that the implementation be delayed so that we can fairly address the task of writing the curriculum once the standards have been reviewed and finalized.
Thank you, Renee.
We now are moving into our third presentation, and that is a presentation on the proposed 2022-23 school budget. Now I turn that over to our school business administrator, Mrs. Swan.
Thank you. The process of the school budget started back in January as we began to call upon the principals and supervisors of the various areas throughout the district to put together a proposal for what they felt they needed for the 2022-23 school year. Taking that information and then combining that with the strategic plans of the board, as well as the academic expectations of the district, is what brings the total budget to this point, the presentation to the public, so that you have the opportunity to hear about what is being included in next year's school budget. In order for a budget to balance, meaning that the resources that we're able to raise are sufficient for us to be able to cover these programs that are proposed, we need to be working efficiently. And that concept of an equal resources, equal costs is a process that not only is supported by the state of New Jersey's Department of Education, but obviously is implemented here. And so we work very hard, along with the supervisors and the principals, to produce a budget that is efficient, as well as being effective for the needs of the students. When we do presentations and talk about the budget, what we do is we take this big number and this big amount and break it into smaller areas that are similar, and those areas are instruction, support services, administration, and employee benefits, and then operations. So the first of those is the area of instructions. This is what would occur in a classroom, regular classrooms, special ed classrooms, basic skills and bilingual classrooms, as well as things like co-curricular activities, athletics, and then for those students who we are not able to educate and need their means, tuition related, for them to go outside to a different classroom and receive what they need. From the perspective of how much of the budget is tied up in the classroom events, almost half is tied to those classroom events. For the 22-23 school year, what we will be doing is we are adding three additional For the 22-23 school year, what we will be doing is we are adding three additional elementary teachers due to enrollment changes. We will be expanding the basic skills by one-half of a teacher as well as bilingual by one-third due to the needs of the students. We are continuing our one-to-one Chromebook initiative, which has now really expanded into a lot more online applications. So what you find is that our textbooks are no longer physical textbooks, but are online applications that the students are able to access through their Chromebooks as that one-to-one initiative continues to expand. As we have been doing for the last few years, we are continuing to offer PSAT testing in the high school. And this year, we are doing a lot of streamlining of special education programs in order to improve the services that are provided, which will allow students who have been placed out of district because we couldn't meet their needs to come back and be part of inclusive programs within the district. And then finally, we've added additional supervision and additional staff for safety events at our, or safety needs at our athletic events. The second area is support services, and this represents about 11% of the total budget. It's very much tied to what's going on in the classroom. These are the people who are not directly teaching, but they're supporting the teaching that's going on in the classroom, the nurses, the child study team, students who require speech therapy, occupational or physical therapy, guidance services, media services, all the curriculum that was just discussed, the training of the staff. All of these elements support what's happening in the classrooms and help make the program within the classrooms even better. In terms of changes, we've added additional services for related, which is your occupational, your physical, and your speech therapy, as well as extraordinary services, one-on-one services based on student needs. We have been, over the last few years, expanding our vocational program for those students with special needs as they begin to prepare to exit the high school. And we are expanding that program once again based on the needs of the students who will be coming up to that age, getting ready to leave us. This year, we are adding in a behavioral care program, which will assist students who have those needs additionally. That's another way in which we'll be able to bring students back into our district who have been out in order for them to participate in the programs here with students that they're, they know from other things within the town. And then we're putting funds aside for the alignment of the curriculum in multiple disciplines, one of them being the PE and health that Andrea just got done talking about. Administration and benefits. This includes both the general administration of the entire district as well as the specific administrators and their offices in the schools. It includes the business office and the technology offices that are district-wide. The other area that we talked about on this particular slide is employee benefits. Those are the employee benefits, not just for the administration, but for the entire staff. So that would be the benefits that are tied to the teaching staff, the support service staff, the operation staff, as well as the administrative staff. In terms of variances from year to year, mostly these variances come from the area of legal costs varying from year to year. In terms of business and technology, variances that you're seeing, particularly in 2021 being so high, is us doing a camera and security upgrade project, which improved the cameras and the security systems throughout the entire district. And then what you see in terms of benefits is increases due to medical insurance costs and premiums. This area is the area of operations. So this includes all of the pieces that allow the programs to occur within the classrooms. We need to get the students from their homes to their, to the classrooms. We need to feed them when they're here. We need to maintain the buildings. We need to provide security while they're here, as well as improving the buildings so that we had years and years and years of usage going forward. All of that falls under the area of buildings and operations. In this area, we have a lot of one-time costs that occurred in 21-22. Unfortunately, we had some flood issues this year. And those one-time projects are going to cause variances in the balances as you look at them. We are continuing to do our Student Resource Officer and our Class Three Officer, which we added down, is that the second one? We added down in Lazar in this current year, and we'll be continuing that into this year. You do see an increase in transportation, and that relates to the fuel prices going up as well as additional costs due to driver shortages. And then finally, in the area of equipment and improvement, you have projects that are going to start this summer, summer of '22, in order to continue to improve the buildings and to do repairs and replacements, renovations to the buildings so that we do have longevity. And the buildings are there to go and service students into the future. In terms of the projects that we will be doing this summer, that includes an upgrade to the security and the entrance at Lazar, wall panels at the sister schools Cedar Hill, William Mason, and Woodmont, the replacement of the windows at Woodmont, exterior entrance and signage that we'll be doing at Valley View, landscaping at Cedar Hill, unit ventilator replacement at Valley View, paving at Hildale, William Mason, and Valley View, and then interior painting starting at the high school in Lazar. And again, all of those projects are there in order for us to continue to maintain and improve the buildings. When you take all those individual areas and you add them up, that then represents the expenditure side for the district as a whole. When you compare those costs to previous years, what you notice is we increased by about 2.8% over the previous year. Now, in order to have those costs, we need to have resources to help fund them. And as with most suburban districts, most of our funding, 87%, comes from local sources, mostly from local tax levy. But there are additional miscellaneous revenues such as interest, fees from the sporting events, fees that we collect on the use of buildings, refunds, things like that. The second big source of revenue is from the state, and those state sources come through aid for specific reasons, transportation, special ed, and then extraordinary aid, which also relates to special ed. Those amounts are up from previous years as a result of changes in our population and needs that are met through our recording of our student data in October. When you look at the resources that we have provided, we mostly rely, like I said, on local. We have some from the state and the federal government, and then we put a little bit of money in from our own savings. The reserves being an example of that. That's money that the board puts aside specifically for the reason of doing capital and maintenance repairs. The one last area that is covered in the budget is special revenues. And what special revenues are, is they are funds that we receive from outside sources, local sources such as just local corporations that are given, funds are given to us for a very specific purpose, to be spent for a very specific need. State sources, those funds are funds that we act as a pass-through to the non-public schools that are within our town, and then federal sources for specific reasons. These numbers have been growing over the last few years as the federal government has provided a number of waves of funding related to COVID. And then the last area is the area of debt service. Now, debt service is, for all the referendums that have occurred in the past, these are the principal and interest payments that relate to the paying back of those referendum amounts. And what you'll notice as you look from 21-22 to 22-23 is the numbers are going down, and that's because one of our issuances was fully paid off. As part of the funding for the debt service area, we have had a little bit of money, $4,000, that we put from fund balance or savings, and then the remaining amount is from debt service aid. That debt service aid is the 40% that was mentioned when the referendum was passed, that the state funded 40% of the cost of the referendum, and that they pay that in incremental amounts as the debt ages through its entire life. As a total tax impact for all of the budget for the 22-23 school year, the average house is assessed in Monville for $531,000. And for that average home, the budget for '22-23 is, provides an increase of $182,000. So there's a lot of programs and a lot of activities that are included for that small increase.
Thank you very much, Kateen. Any questions of board members?
Charlie? I would just like to thank, continue in the business office for putting together this budget and for...
I wish we would have that in a minute. We'll check next, make sure you put that in.
And for doing a really clean-spoken public hearing tonight.
I might also report that this is the same tentative budget that was approved several weeks ago, and there were no changes made at the county or state level, which is quite an accomplishment, again, for our business staff. Since there are no questions at this time, I'd like to now move into Business Administrator's report, if you have one, Kateen, or if you're talk-out.
No additional reports.
We go into committee reports. Finance, Karen?
We met right before tonight's meeting, and the, I'll just add that at that meeting, we discussed the summer projects that Kateen referenced.
Thank you. Curriculum, David?
Nick.
Nick, right? Policy? O'Brien?
No.
Communications? Nothing. Michelle wasn't here? Mike Rappaport? Nothing on safety yet, right?
No report.
Players on? Cedar Hill count? Oh, no, wait a minute. School boards?
Right, school boards. So just a plug once again. Workshop is happening on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, October 24th, 25th, and 26th. It'll be in person. I would really encourage any board member, even if you can only go down for a day, to attend. It's a wonderful convention, lots of networking. You get to meet and talk to school board members from other parts of the state or from our own neighborhood. And it's just a great opportunity to put into perspective what school board members throughout the state are facing. So plug for that, and I'm sure Kateen can, Kateen will register you if you choose to go. The Resolution Subcommittee met on April 6th. There were no resolutions to be presented to the Delegate Assembly in May, but there was review, sunset review of various policies which were moved on and will be sent to the DA for full approval. There was also amendment to NJSPA's bylaws, and these are regarding qualifications to serve as an officer. And what has been added is qualification that a board member achieve at least a certification as a certified board member. The Executive Committee also met today, and each director went through their department. Time was spent a little bit on workshop as well as upcoming legislation.
Thank you, Karen. Morris County School Boards, Mike?
O'Brien? I have no report to give based on my failure to communicate with the county and my lack of technological skills, but Karen is going to take care of that for me. It won't happen again. Thank you.
Educational Services, Joe?
Yes, on March 30th, we had a special meeting to approve the sale of the Academy Street Building. We've also are approving the website for the school. And that's the new agenda right now.
Thank you. Do you have awareness, Mr. Palmer?
No report.
Athletic players on?
Mustang, the Athletic Association, met on the 6th of the month. It was a very well-attended meeting. We discussed the sports program and appreciation days and pep rallies and so on. The Athletic Director gave a very comprehensive report, and I also gave a comprehensive report relating what things went on at recent board meetings and alerting them that budget presentation would be tonight. And we discussed spring sports and so on. Just a little anecdotal thing that was discussed in my report. You know, the 50th anniversary of the first graduating class of Monville High School is this year, and maybe a couple fossils were around at that time. And they are having a reunion, all right, this summer. I've been in touch with them. They, people who were associated with the board at that time, if they're still around in existence, are welcome to come to this gathering. And they've extended it to clinical classes of 73 and 74 as well. So if you want more information about that, you can see me. It's on, in July.
You know when the next meeting is, Mike?
It's the first Wednesday of the month for the...
The first Wednesday of May, which would be the 4th, right? Right, 4th? Thank you. Cedar Hill? Anything, Karen?
No, no report.
Hildale, not in Valley View, Joe?
No report.
Mason?
No report.
Would not?
No report. Meeting sometime around the end of May. Lazar?
Anything from Lazar? O'Brien?
So the next PTC meeting is May 16th. I encourage everyone to sign up and receive the PTC newsletter. It has lots of information about teacher appreciation and upcoming events. So if you haven't signed up for the PTC newsletter, you should.
Thank you. High school? Rappaport? Ben?
Our next meeting is Monday, May 9th, right here in the Media Center. And definitely is, the PTC has sent out a notice about the teacher appreciation luncheon, and it'd be really great for people to volunteer either the food goods or some money to help out and buy the luncheon. Work for the teachers and show our appreciation for all their hard work.
Thank you, Mike. Public participation, an opportunity for any members of the public that would like to speak on any agenda items at this point? I don't see any. Would someone move the agenda plus an addendum, which is J5? So move. Any question on Section I? J?
Just quickly on J3. If the governor doesn't act on a resolution, when do you anticipate we're going to have to start working on the curriculum?
I would imagine that it would happen sometime in July.
Thank you. Item K? Help? M? Roll call, Mrs. Swan?
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Dr. Cortelino?
Yes.
Mr. Daltry?
Yes, abstain on Section K1, check under 2592.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Section B, there's no need to go into closed session? Section Q? Any old business?
Just, I guess going back to what we were saying before, I think we're starting to get a, answer the question about the more language on the society, on the good news, but I think Dr. Ohton was starting to say maybe impractical.
I think you can, I mean, discuss that in committee around the education when you need to discuss it, but there's quite a cumbersome list. Come on.
Yeah, Mike, we can certainly put it in the good news. We typically don't list, we don't usually include a list that's that long, but, you know, we certainly can do that.
Do you wish to list DHS?
No, not individually, no.
Okay, well...
Charlie, I have a bit of... Charlie, I have a bit of old business. I'm just beating the drum again. We're $100 short of meeting our goal of $1,000 for Relay for Life. So if anyone wants to kick in just a little bit more, I'd really like to reach our goal. Thank you.
Scott, you want a ticket? Right on the chair.
You're welcome to serve on the boards of us.
Public participation is an opportunity for anyone to ask questions about anything that we have, on agenda or non-agenda. Seeing none, I wouldn't indicate to interview that we have another meeting next Tuesday. And thank you so much for coming. Enjoy the evening. Meeting, motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much for coming, everyone.